The Boston City Council's weekly meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Amatina.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakeum.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise for our invocation and pledge of allegiance after that. So I'm going to hand the microphone over to Counselor Siomo, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. Please remain standing after the invocation, and Counselor Siomo will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Counselor?
Thank you, Counsel President Wu. I have the great honor to introduce an old, old friend. Used to be the principal of St. Columcils to all my friends. She was stern but compassionate. Except with me, once in a while. No, I'm only kidding. Sister Mary Black became Sister of St. Joseph in 1949. She was a teacher for many years at St. Teresa's in West Roxbury, St. Thomas in Jamaica Plain, St. Columcils in Brighton, where she was also principal, but spent most of her time teaching at Cathedral High School in the South End. She spent three months in Bolivia to learn and understand the Spanish language. She worked for IBA for two years, which is a Puerto Rican social service center, and worked as the director for dropout prevention for Latina youth. She's a volunteer for a safe house for women who have been victims of human trafficking, and she now is a consultant to the Office of Mission Advancement for the Sisters of St. Joseph of Boston. For the past 20 years, she has been fundraising for Cathedral High School to keep that thriving institution. So without further ado, it's my great honor to introduce Sister Mary Black.
Thank you, Mary. Good morning, and thank you very much for the invitation to come and offer the prayer this morning. This is a wonderful place. It's wonderful to be here. I know that in the midst of people who care about their neighbors, and so it's a very sacred place, a holy place, because we are about loving the neighbor as part of all of us, no matter what our faith is, that we know that we're all called to that. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here and to share prayer. I call this space holy, for it's here that you work to make life better for the citizens of our city. What you work on and what you hope for is all about your constituents, and a very special way to love your neighbor, to lend a hand to the other. When I thought about how we might pray today, I thought that given the recent events in our country, we might well pray or begin by thanking God for all the graces in which Boston has been blessed in the past year, while at the same time, we are aware that we have escaped the ravages of devastating hurricanes and the hatred we saw exhibited in Charlottesville, as well as the violence and extensive loss of life recently experienced in Las Vegas, in Texas, and so many other places around the world. In the fact, the list of what we have escaped and what we have blessed with, been blessed with, is quite lengthy. I know that each of you could silently add your own blessings of the past year and your sorrows to that list. And so with some sadness, but also with gratitude and hope, we pray. Dear God, bless our time together today and in the days to come. Help us to have always in mind the welfare of the people of this city. May what we do here promote the well-being of all, from our elders, our sick, especially those with mental illness, our frightened, our college students, our young professionals, as well in a special way, our children and their families. And how about a special prayer for those who have addicted? Be with all our public servants, our teachers, our social workers, and all those who risk their lives for us, our police, our firemen and women. May we always have in mind, especially those who are the most needy in our city, and who rely on us and you as elected officials, their city counselors, to promote that which will make their lives happier and more productive. And so we end our prayer by joining with the psalmist who declares, "Oh, God, may we grasp those things that you want us to understand, and may your face continually shine upon us." Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all for having me here today.
Thanks, Sister. I would like to declare that the United States of America is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Siomo. Thank you, Sister. We have three special presentations today, but before we get to those, I want to give a very special shout-out and welcome to Counselor-elect Kim Janey, who is with us today. Congratulations. And she is sitting right above the other group that we wanted to give a very warm welcome to, and thank you. It is the Psi Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Thank you, they've been with us all morning. Counselor Presley has invited them in to spend a day in City Hall and thinking about civic engagement, so we appreciate you and we thank you for being here as well. And to start off our presentations, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Counsel President Wu. Could Paul Berkley join me up here? Paul? So I have the pleasure and honor, don't be afraid, to introduce someone that I've had the pleasure of working with the past 10 years. Paul has been the president of the Austin Civic Association for almost 25 years now. He has his fingerprints on much of the great things that are happening in our neighborhood, and particularly in Austin. When I think of Austin, I think people hear from Austin, they think Paul Berkley, you know, you see Austin in the dictionary, you see his picture, because he's been so involved. He's a father, he's a husband, he's a homeowner, and he's been so active in our community, all for the better. So Paul, it gives me great pleasure to read a citation to you on behalf of me and my counsel colleagues. Whereas, a resolution from the City Council. Whereas, Paul Berkley has been an Austin resident his whole life, and Paul Berkley got involved in the Austin Civic Association after encouragement from his old Boy Scout leader and neighbor at the time, Joe Smith. And whereas, not until after buying a house in Austin did he take interest in the process of civic engagement. Whereas, Paul became more involved after being impressed by the collaborative efforts of the ACA in neighborhood safety issues. And whereas, Paul has been a member for about five or six years when he was asked if he would join the executive board of the ACA. And whereas, Paul became president of the ACA in 1993. He has served in that position for almost 25 years. And whereas, Paul has presided over nearly 300 community meetings and has reviewed approximately 1,000 development and licensing proposals. And whereas, Paul has belonged to many different organizations, task forces, committees, coaching, both Little League and hockey. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes and appreciation to Paul Berkley for dedicating over 25 years of civic service to the Austin community. Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I say to you, I too.
Thank you. He forgot to mention I'm a grandfather, too.
Oh, sorry, yeah, recent, right? Someone.
Thank you, counselors. Maureen. Last week at a community reception, I had a chance to say a few things. And I mentioned that when I first became president of the ACA, I was asked what the goals and objectives were. And Mark mentioned Joe Smith, the founder of the ACA. And Joe had written a handwritten mission statement, and in that statement, he said that the purpose of the ACA was to provide a regular, consistent public forum for residents of Austin and Brighton to express their individual ideas and concerns, and to have those ideas and concerns translated into effective constructive action. And that's basically what I did for 24 years. We had some successes and we had some disappointments, but at the end of the day, we always had a voice. But that voice wouldn't matter much if there wasn't somebody listening. So I want to thank Mark and the counselors that served before him, all of you on this body here, and the various, the mayor's office and the departments that work for him, the transportation, Public Works, Landmarks, the BRA. We've had a chance to work with all of these agencies to be effective in advocating for our community. I also want to thank all my friends from Austin that came in today, and especially for coming out and going to meetings at night in the community, and sitting on those cold metal chairs and listening to one developer after another, and the presentations and the boards, but they do the important work of a community. So, once again, thank you very much, and congratulations on those of you, to those of you returning, and thank you.
Thanks. Do you want to bring up anybody in your family? Yeah, of course. Chase, chase.
I don't like this setup.
And then these guys all crowd around us. Hey, we're going to do something about that whistle in door. Oh, I should have put the citation. Wait a minute. Yeah, or just one of them. Great, we're good. Thanks. Thanks, Paul. Enjoy. You going to go down and check on the end now?
Congratulations.
Next up will be Counselor McCarthy for his presentation. I also want to give a very special thank you to our Boston Police Commissioner Evans for being here with us as well in the chamber.
Never been back here. My first time back here in the new digs. Thank you very much, Madam President. If I could have the members of the Mildred Ave K-8 school come on down? Mildred Ave K-8 is a wonderful school. I've been there many, many times, and I always feel very, very special when I go there, not just because Principal Rollins walks me around personally, but because I've gotten to dance with the kids, I've gotten to, and I'm not a very good dancer, but I will dance, it happens. And we've had many classes. I remember distinctly, one of the classes was working on underground, what was going on in the streets and the sidewalks, and of course, as all you know, I worked for Public Works for years, and I ended up about 45 minutes in a class talking about how sewers work. So it's a phenomenal school, and they had a tremendous honor a couple weeks ago, where they received the 2017 Adventurers Tom W. Pezon School on the Move Prize. And so this is official resolution from us to them for their school's tremendous achievement and performance due to their collaborative, innovative, and internal organization of planning, and that'd be resolved at the Boston City Council hereby as expresses its congratulations and best wishes for their continued success. When I visit this school, you know, we all visit schools, and you can just feel the energy. The kids are happy to be there, they're thrilled to be there, they're respectful, they're quiet in the halls, it's all of those wonderful things, and I think it clearly comes down to they have a great leader in Principal Rollins. And we're also joined by Sadie, who's a teacher leader, John Bates, who's also a teacher leader, and we have, most importantly, the students, Elijah, Yahim, Albertina, and Omari. If I butchered those, I'm really sorry, but pretty close? Yeah. All right, see, that's pretty close. So without further ado, I really would like to introduce my friend and the principal of the Mildred Ave K-8, Mr. Rollins.
Counselor McCarthy said I had just 45 minutes today, so I'm going to try to keep it to like 42, 43. Just real quickly, if I can have my team just introduce themselves real quickly. Ms. Soto, do you mind starting this?
Hi, Sadie Soto. I'm the dance teacher at the Mildred Ave, and I've been there for 13 years. And he came, and Mr. McCarthy, he came to my room and he danced with my fourth graders last year, and he was pretty good, I have to say.
Not bad. Video was destroyed.
Good morning, my name's John Bates. I'm a special ed teacher at the Mildred for 13 years.
My name is Omar Sanquint, and I've been at the Mildred for four years, and I'm in the eighth grade.
My name is Jahim Dewire. I've been at the Mildred for three years, and I live in Dorchester.
My name is Albertina Mendez, and I've been in Mildred for four years, and I am an eighth grader.
And I'm Andrew Rollins, proud principal of the Mildred Avenue. This is my fourth year there. Just ever so quickly to tell a little bit about our story, we were in pretty tough straits about four years ago, and at that point, our teachers, the teachers' union and the school district came together, put together an intervention agreement to prevent us from going to turn around. At that time, the state was visiting us often. Our scores were among the absolute lowest in the entire state of Massachusetts. And there were a lot of things that changed at that time, but the biggest thing is that our teachers, our students, and our families just took ownership over the school, rolled up their sleeves, and just, we have like a whatever-it-takes type of philosophy. We've tried to re-engineer our school to be, from the students' perspective, so they enjoy coming. They work hard, but they get opportunities to go to dance, and they get opportunities to play sports, and have recess, and have fun as well. And so we've been, we've been very fortunate. Two years ago, we were second in the state among K-8s in ELA growth, fourth in math growth. Last year, we became a Level One school. I believe, at the time, I think we were the only school in Massachusetts to ever go from first percentile, which sometimes people applaud for us being first percentile, that's actually the opposite, you want to be 99th. First percentile to Level One, I believe we were the only school that had ever done that at the time in Massachusetts. And then just a couple weeks ago, we were fortunate enough to win the School on the Move Prize. And it's just a testament to the incredible hard work of our teachers, our staff, the commitment of our families, and of course, the awesome work of our 557 students. So thank you so much for the opportunity to come down here. Thank you, Counselor. We really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
You want to pick it up? Come on up. Here you go. You're all very matchy. Very, very monochromatic today. Come on, jump up. It's all about you guys, not about me.
See you later, so.
Thanks a lot, Jim. See you soon. Thank you. Bring my tap shoes. No, it's yours. See you guys later. Thanks for coming in.
Congratulations. Thank you all very much. And for our final presentation, I'd like to invite up Counselor Campbell.
Okay, well, they can come up for the picture. So I am honored to have Commissioner Evans with us, as well as Officers Brendan Bossy and Officer Mike Rockwell. If you read the Herald probably a few weeks ago, you saw on the cover page that they were responsible for saving the life of one of our fellow residents. And if you saw, they called them a hero or heroes. Today is a special day, because we literally talk about officers usually in the context of complaints, what they're not doing right, what they're doing wrong. This was a unique opportunity, not just on behalf of me and my office, but this council, to bring you forward and to really honor and acknowledge the incredible work that they do every day, but in this particular context, the work they did that particular day to save a life of a resident who was in distress. I just want to read you a couple of things that the Herald actually said, and I think Mike described as this. Neither of us thought twice about it, we just went and we did it. In addition to that, the gentleman who they didn't reveal who this person was, was grateful to them and continues to be grateful for them. For them to go out on this sort of cliff, and there was like a little railing, if I'm correct. Correct? You were there. You were actually there. This was a description in the Herald, but you were there. It was unsafe for them. They were truly putting their lives in danger, and they did it without question. Many folks in the police department do this every single day. So today, I don't want to talk too long, I just want them to know that I'm grateful for their service, the commissioner knows I'm grateful for his service. I'm also appreciative of your families. These are the kids, wife is back here, but literally, the families that allow you to go out every single day to do this work. I have my newborn in the office, and I know what it means to sacrifice your family that time, so thank you both. Do you want to say a few words? Okay, I don't think they want to say anything, but I appreciate you on behalf of the council, on behalf of my vice chair, Counsel McCarthy, thank you for your service that day, thank you for all you continue to do for our community, for our district. And if we could give them a round of applause before the Commissioner comes up.
Yes, please sit.
I'll just say, on behalf of, you know, the police department, we're real proud of our offices. I think they exemplify the fine work that we do day in and day out, and, you know, a lot of our officers every day go out and put their lives on the line, and we deal with a lot of challenges. And I was listening to this on my way home, and the way they moved into action, they shut down the Mass Pike, they shut down Clarendon Street, you know, they did a lot of great work that day. So I'm real proud to be here, and I'm glad, and I thank the City Council for recognizing the great work of these two officers. And obviously, their wives and families, we're real proud of your dad, and we're real proud of your husband, and I appreciate all that they do, and I appreciate all the members of the department, and all public servants, whether they're fire EMTs and all city workers. You know, we do a great job to make this city the great place it is. So thank you all, thank you.
And I'm going to quickly read the citation when my colleagues come up, do come up. It literally says, Officer Bossy and Rockwell, that we're appreciative and we extend our appreciation to them for their swift, valiant, deliberate, lifesaving rescue efforts on Friday, November 3rd. Thank you. Yeah, I know, they're taking pictures. We can get someone to do that.
How come you guys aren't in school today?
Coming, they're going somewhere.
More importantly.
Thank you. The rest of the proper rest.
Thank you all. Thank you, Paul. Very nice. Good to see you.
Thank you guys, and nice to meet you, okay? Especially about the family juice. Don't cry. Oh, let me give this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. After that very energizing beginning to the meeting, we're ready for our formal business of the day. Once Madam Clerk's ready. We'll start with approval of the minutes. Are there any changes or amendments to the last meeting's minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved, and communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1424, message and order for an approval of the appropriation of $123,55,413 for the purpose of paying costs for the Boston Arts Academy, which is a new school facility to be built on the site of the current Boston Arts Academy located at 174 Ipswich Street in the city of Boston.
Docket number 1424 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1425, message and order authorizing the acceptance of the provision of Section 3 of Chapter 64N of the General Laws, which allows the municipality that accepts that section to impose a local state tax of up to 3% upon the sale of, transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by the recreational marijuana retailer. The order also sets the rate of the local sales tax on marijuana at a maximum allowed 3% rate.
Docket number 1425 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1426, notice was received from the contract for payments in lieu of taxes known as pilot agreement entered into by and among the city of Boston, the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, and TS Partners LLC.
Docket 1426 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1427, petition of Star Shuttle Inc. for a license to operate motor vehicles for carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Docket 1427 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation.
Do, whoops, sorry. Docket number 1428, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Javier Flores as a member of the Boston Fair Housing Commission for a term expiring July 1st, 2020.
Docket 1428 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1429, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Deborah Wright as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1st, 2018.
Docket 1429 will be placed on file.
Docket number 143, which we will move for substitution due to a change of date. Notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 3:00 PM on Saturday, November 11th, until 10:00 on November 18th.
November 11th, until 10:00 on November 15th, 2018.
Is there any objection to the substitution? Hearing none. The new language is substituted, and docket 1430 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 1192, the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, to which was referred on September 13th, 2017, docket number 1192, petition of SB Partners LLC for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston submits a report recommending the petition ought to be placed on file. Would you like me to read the second one?
Yes, could you read both, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket number 1193, the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, to which was referred on September 13th, 2017, docket number 1193, petition of Hiren Boston LLC for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain city streets in Boston submits a report recommending the petition ought to be placed on file.
On dockets 1192 and 1193, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, Counsel La Matina.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very simple, these two applicants weren't prepared to go forward, and they asked if they placed on file. So they're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel La Matina. Docket 1192 will be placed on file, and docket 1193 will be placed on file. Motion, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1431, Councilors McCarthy and Wu offer the following resolution in support of House Bill 2723, an act establishing a rapid transportation pilot for the Fairmont corridor.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Oh. Fairmount, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you very much, Madam President. Representative Cavalo put together Bill 2723 for the rapid transit in the Fairmont corridor. As you know, I've stood in this spot many, many times railing against, there was a little pun there, railing against the MBTA. Thank you very much. Frank Baker and I traveled, Counsel Baker and I traveled down to Philadelphia to take a look at the high-speed rail from Mattapan Square to Ashmont. We met with the Commons Union down there, and through efforts from this council, Representative Cullenane, Representative Hunt, Representative Holmes, we got the MBTA to belly up and stop the nonsense of tearing that up. The concept was to rip up the rails and actually put in a bus line between there, which, you know, would not happen in Hingham or Dover, let's just face it. So they stepped up to the plate. This ongoing relationship with the MBTA has been tedious, but I think it's getting better. The reality is with the rapid transit is, and I've said this before, it just simply costs too much money to get from District 5 to downtown Boston. They don't run on every 15 minutes, they run every hour and 15, every hour and a half. So if you have to be in work at 9:00, you may have to get up and get out at 6:30 in the morning and hang in town for an hour and a half before you actually report to work. A lot of this doesn't make sense. One thing we did learn in Philadelphia is the problem with the commuter rails themselves. One Common Union member down in Philadelphia put it the best way. He said, "If you were an Uber driver, you get a Camry or you get a Ford Fusion, you don't get a semi." And that's what the commuter rails are. They're not designed to stop every 300, 400, you know, yards, or even every one or two miles. They're designed to go miles and miles at a time before stopping. This is something that the MBTA has to look at. This line stops at Reedville and goes back into town. Rapid transit for my area is really, it's intense, because every community meeting we go to, and as a district city council, I know everybody on this floor, one of the biggest concerns we have is traffic. Too much traffic, can't get through, too long to get downtown. And everybody in here knows I usually come in very, very early, or I have my community meetings in the morning in my area, because if I left my house at 8:00 from Reedville to get here, I would probably get in about 9:15. 9:15 frazzled and angry. It's a tough commute. So this is something that we need to support. I urge everybody to sign on, and I certainly urge everybody to continue an open dialogue with the MBTA to help them understand what the constituents of Boston, the economic engine of the Commonwealth, need from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Very proud to partner with you on this, but even more so as your constituent, proud that my district rep is continuing to lead on this issue, which is very important, the commute time. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Zachem's name? Please add Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel La Matina, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Savi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker, Counsel Presley. At this time, Counsel McCarthy moves for suspension and adoption of docket 1431. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1431 has been adopted.
Docket number 1432, Counsel Zachem, I want to call the ordinance, decrease in access to voter registration.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I introduce this ordinance today as a direct result of the hearing we held in the Special Committee on Civil Rights about a month ago, where we heard testimony from residents, from advocates, from members of the administration, including the Transportation Department, the library, the Boston Public Schools, including students from the Boston Public Schools. And the intent of this ordinance is to make it easier for people to register to vote. As all of us are well aware of turnout numbers in the city of Boston, and I'm thrilled that those of us who did stand for election are all back here, but regardless of that, the turnout was very low in our city elections. And turnout's also fairly low in state elections and even federal elections. And there was an interesting study I actually have, it was in Worcester, but I think it's similarly resulted to be found in Boston, that if you look at turnout numbers, that's obviously based on people who are registered to vote and who vote. It doesn't really look at those who are otherwise eligible to vote but have not even registered, and not even know to take that first step. To use Worcester as an example, if you look just at registered voters, they had about 80% of their precincts had over 50% turnout in recent election. But that turnout number goes to 32% of their precincts if you talk about eligible folks who could have registered to vote, who didn't. And those impacts are disproportionately felt in low-income communities and communities of color. And certainly something that is an impact for in Boston, we have a lot of people who move quite a bit, as Counsel Siomo can tell you, and as I can tell you from Mission Hill, September 1st is a huge day for people to move and change their residences. And very often primaries or preliminary elections are within three weeks. And right now, the state has an arbitrary 20-day registration deadline. So unless you are so on top of things that while you're setting up your Comcast or your Verizon and your mail and everything else, you're going to go register to vote on the same day you move, it's tough. And I think that is something we need to look at, and I was proud to join with all of you in urging the state to change that earlier this year. But what this bill is intending to do is when folks have routine interactions with our city departments, like when you get your library card or apply for a library card to be offered an opportunity to register to vote, when you get a resident permit parking sticker, and as we all know, they ask for just about everything except the DNA swab to prove you are who you are and you live where you live. I don't think it's going to be too much of a burden to say, "Also, by the way, would you like to register to vote during this interaction?" And I think more, most importantly, for our Boston Public School students, we have students who want to be civically engaged, who are of age to vote, and we heard from a member of the Student Advisory Council at this hearing who said he had a lot of friends who were registered or who wanted to be registered, but there were two obstacles. One was those who were unable to register. They didn't know how to register, they didn't realize that in Massachusetts, if you're going to be 18 by the time of the election, you actually can preregister, and that's something our schools can help facilitate. But more importantly, even those 18-year-olds who had taken the time to register, they couldn't go vote on Election Day, because given our citywide high school system, it's not that easy to, you know, duck out for 20 minutes to go back to your home precinct and vote. So another provision of this ordinance would require the Boston Public Schools allow students to do that, whether that means coming in a little late if you were voting, or having a time during the day on Election Day to go home and vote. I think it's really important, as you know, Counsel Jackson has often talked about and brought students in here and to have advocated for themselves, as I encourage when I talk to, whether it's high school students or middle school students or others across the city, being civically engaged, we should be making this easier, not harder. And I don't think it's too much of a burden. And to be honest, I was really thrilled to hear from all of the administration officials who testified, who were in support of this, who were in support of taking steps that we can do very simply at low cost and interacting with the Elections Department and other city departments to make this easier. You know, it's certainly an important step we can take, as we hear over and over again about other states in this country, about the president in Washington trying to disenfranchise people. Here in Boston, we have an opportunity to make it easier. You know, no one can, no one's going to force anyone to vote. At the end of the day, someone has to make that choice for themselves. But when we have people who are in school or who are working two or three jobs, we need to make it as easy as possible. If they're going to be coming into this building, or they're going to go to our BPS engagement centers, or they're going to their local branch libraries to otherwise take part in city services, it is not too much of a burden to say, "By the way, if you're interested, here's how you can register to vote, we're going to facilitate that for you." So that's it. I look forward to, you know, having a quick hearing, and I look forward to cooperation from the administration, and I hope many of you will participate in that. I think this is so important as elected officials and a representative of democracy to make sure that we are truly representing the people we are supposed to serve and encouraging them all to vote and making it easier for them to do so. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel O'Malley's name? Please add Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel La Matina, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Savi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker. Please add the Chair's name. And docket number 1432 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1433, Counsel Flaherty offered the following order, following order that the City Council Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act hold interviews of finalists for appointment to the Community Preservation Committee.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy to report that the Advisory Committee is in the final stages of paring down the list of applicants. I think we received somewhere in the vicinity of 100 applications to serve on the CPC, and they're going to be narrowing that field down to 16, in which case they will then turn the 16 over to the council committee. And after today's session, we'll be scheduling for the 20th and the 27th, so a couple marathon Mondays for the Special Committee and the City Council to vet the remaining 16, the finalists, to then produce a list for council review and a council vote. So again, this is moving expeditiously. Want to thank the Advisory Committee members who are bunkered down off-campus right now, going through those resumes and checking those references, so they're doing a lot of the great work that we need. I know they've been working closely with Counsel Campbell and I's office, as well as you, Madam President. So looking forward to having that list submitted, I think, at some point later this afternoon. And as soon as that happens, we'll schedule interviews for the 20th and the 27th. So wish all of my council colleagues could just save some space in their calendars. I'll provide the lunch. We'll get this thing done, we'll have a marathon session, a working lunch, if you will, and let's get that 16 down to four. Let's get four in front of this council. So those four can join those five that are appointed by the mayor under the leadership of Christine Pluff and get going on the great work creating housing and open space and historic preservation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Any other comments or questions? Docket 1433 will be assigned to the Special Committee on the Community Preservation Act. And on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1434, Counsel Wu for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo moves for suspension and passage of docket 1434. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1434 has been passed.
Docket number 1435, Counsel Wu for Counsel Siomo.
And Counsel Siomo moves for suspension and passage of docket 1435. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1435 has been passed.
Docket number 1436, offered by Counsel Wu, has been withdrawn.
Madam Clerk, Chair would like to withdraw docket 1436. Thank you. I am informed by the clerk that there are five late filed matters, I believe four of which are personnel in nature, and one from Counsel Siomo. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first late filed matter?
November 14th, 2017, in the City Council. Counsel Michelle Wu offers for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy moves for suspension and passage of the first late file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The first late file has been passed.
Counsel Wu on November 14th, 2017, for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy moves for a suspension and passage of the second late file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The second late file has been passed.
November 14th, 2017, Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the third late filed matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The third late file has been passed.
On November 14th, 2017, Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Jackson.
And Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of the fourth late file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The fourth late filed matter has been passed.
Fifth late filed matter, offered by Counsel Maxiomo in the City Council, relative to the adoption of classification in the city of Boston for FY 2018, whereas the residents of Boston lead the successful efforts to amend our state constitution to allow classification for the purposes of taxation, therefore be it ordered that pursuant to the General Laws Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the city of Boston for fiscal year 2018 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further ordered that pursuant to the General Laws Chapter 59, Section 5C, as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value of the Class 1 residential parcels in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Siomo, you have the floor on the fifth late filed matter.
First, let me apologize for the late file, but we are up against the clock. We need to get this to the Department of Revenue for certification before the end of the year, and there's only a few meetings less than, we don't have a meeting next week. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Would anyone like to sign on? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel O'Malley? Please add Counsel Baker, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Savi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Jackson, Counsel La Matina, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Zachem. Please add the Chair's name. And this fifth late filed matter will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. There are two late filed matters for, there are two late filed matters which, in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added, and Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. We will pause. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? No takers to the green sheets, and just a moment for any statements or announcements to the group. Counsel O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
I ask unanimous consent to make a brief statement, Madam President.
You have it.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and acknowledge our colleague, Counsel Tito Jackson. We didn't meet last week after the election, but I just wanted to acknowledge the class and the character that he demonstrated. Obviously, elections are hard things, and I was not supporting Counsel Jackson's memorial campaign, but, Tito, you did this city proud, you did this body proud, and we're a better city because of your candidacy. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. And Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I want to thank Counsel O'Malley, as well as the people of the city of Boston, for the opportunity to have served in District 7, but also to advance the conversation in our city, to have a conversation about what we want to see and what we should see for everybody. We know that many of the matters that we deal with here come with such an urgency because people in many parts of the city are not doing as well as folks who are down here. We are having conversations about bringing new people to the city, but I think it's so important that as we look at schools, like the Miljard Avenue School, which is a Level 4 school, and through a lot of hard work, they're now a Level 1 school. We want to see that across the board for every single one of the young people in our city. But that requires financial commitment by this body and this building to make sure that we're investing in the future for those young people. It also means that as we have the conversation about the CPA, that that not be the only funding that we're talking about around affordable housing. And it also means that we have to have a conversation about what that word "affordable" means. The NAACP put out a report, and I encourage each of you, read it. It's a blueprint for what we should be thinking about. And I just got a stat yesterday, by 2053, actually by 2043 in the United States, we will be majority people of color, but by 2053, black residents in the U.S. will have a median net worth of zero. That's where we're headed. And so if we do nothing in our city, then we will head there even faster. All of those things said, it has been a joy and an honor to be able to run this race, to be able to have a voice. a voice and realize and show, it's not about how much you have in your bank account, it's really about how much you have in your heart, how much you care, and how hard you're willing to work for the people who you serve. I always close most of my speeches with the concept of a dash, and the time between when you came to someplace and when you leave it. And I am very proud of the hyphen or the dash and the work that I've been able to do, but most importantly, my staff, my office, and the people who have been in this building, the people who support us in the council, and in particular, our staffs. So it has been a joy. With that said, the joy keeps on going. We, this next weekend, will have an opportunity to hand some of that joy out to people in Boston who need it. In 2011, I partnered with an organization to give out turkeys. And, you know, it's funny, because people have poked fun at me for doing this. They said this is the only thing that we do, or whatever. But when it comes down to it, we gave three hundred people a bird that first year. Sadly, last year, we gave out four thousand. So I feel proud of the ability to raise the money to be able to do that, but it really speaks to where we're headed. But the one ray of light that I think of is a gentleman who walked up to me last year, and he said, "Do you remember me?" I said, "No, I don't remember you." And he said, "Well, in 2011, you gave me a turkey." And he was there the Thursday before the giveaway. He said, "I'm in a much better situation now, and now I get to volunteer and give them out to other folks." That's what this is all about. The question is not how well those on the top of the biggest buildings are doing. The question has to be, what do we do for those elderly, the children, those who have an addiction, those who have mental health issues? I would submit to you, that's who we are. We put together a package for a big company, and people beat me up on, yesterday, and Shirley Leong yesterday said, insert Tito Jackson quote about GE or Amazon. My only push there is that we came up with a plan for a half a trillion dollar company in a month and a half. Where's our plan for those young people who are sitting right there? It took three and a half years for there to be a plan for them. Where's our plan for those folks who we drive past every single day, when we're sitting, when we're driving a Mass Ave Melania Cass? Where's our plan for those folks that our city has left behind? So I invite you out, all of you. If you have time, on Saturday, we'll be at the Reggie Lewis Center. We'll be unloading a truck with a couple thousand thirteen to fifteen pound pieces of love.
Your chief of staff says Sunday.
I'm sorry. Sunday. Don't come on Saturday. Don't come on Saturday. I'm sorry about that. But I'd invite you out to come and help out, folks. But the work continues. The purpose is still there. And I also want to say that I'm proud to have served with each of you. This is some of the most honorable, most important work that we get to do. But I would encourage each of you, do it with a backbone. Stand for something. Stand up for the people who sit out there and who want access. Stand up for those folks who think you have to pay to get into a government building. And stand up for those folks who need our help. You are the legislative body of this, I would say, the best city in the whole world. But the question is, the purpose is and the challenge is, how do you make it the best city for everybody and not just some people? Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the souls that we will be adjourning in memory of today, you know, it's been said that, you know, life well-lived is worth remembering, and I did just want to pay tribute to one of the matriarchs of our city and a constituent of Council Jackson's, Frances Redd. And if you'll indulge me for one moment, Frances Redd, at the age of ninety-five, a longstanding resident of Roxbury, Massachusetts, passed away peacefully on Thursday, November ninth, 2017, at the Sherrill House, surrounded by family members, Council Jackson and Campbell. For many, the last public appearance of Mrs. Redd was when we honored her at the Bruce C. Bowling Municipal Building during Black History Month for our inaugural legacy, Family Legacy Awards. And it was a proud moment for her and her family, and I'm just grateful we could do that together. She was born March fifth, 1922, in Tennessee, the daughter of John Council and Ethel Womack Council. Frances married Everett Russell Redd of Alabama in 1944. They migrated north and settled in Roxbury in the 1950s. Her husband, a chief petty officer, served in the Navy for many years and retired from the base in Chelsea. Like many families, they took advantage of the GI Bill to purchase a home in the Grove Hall section of Dorchester. The community was full of families and neighbors, like Royal Bowling Senior, John Cruz Junior, and restaurants, like Ma Dixon's, and schools, like the William Lloyd Garrison combined, to make Grove Hall a thriving, comfortable community. But this tranquility was shattered in 1969, when Frances's husband died suddenly of a heart attack, and she was widowed at the tender age of forty-five with six children. As if that was not enough pressure for this single parent, the family home was severely damaged by fire one week later. Relying on her Catholic faith, strength of character, consistent work ethic, and a sheer determination, Frances continued to instill in her children the guiding principles of life: family, faith, and education. The home was restored, and Mrs. Redd continued to work nights at the Raytheon Corporation. This allowed her to put food on the table, make mortgage payments, and to save what she could for her dream of educating all six of her children. At great personal sacrifice, she never remarried and deferred her own education. She laid the foundation for all of her children to complete their preparation for secondary education and to enter college. They all went on to attend and to graduate respectively from Boston College, Brandeis University, and Virginia State University, and Simmons College. After her children moved into the working world and started families of their own, Mrs. Redd went back to school and earned her master's degree from Leslie College in Special Education. This led to a second career teaching in the Tynan Elementary School in South Boston until her retirement at the age of eighty. By now, she had six adult children. They were successful in many varied professions with children of their own. I thank you all for your indulgence while I read just a snippet of this woman's incredible life. And, you know, she has certainly planted many seeds, so she will not die, both literally and figuratively, she will live on in many generations. Rest in peace, Frances Redd. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. And Council Jackson, you have the floor.
I'm unanimous consent to make a statement. And I apologize for speaking twice. It's just that Mrs. Redd, that street that they're talking about is actually the same street that I live on. And I've gotten to enjoy her presence, her encouragement, and just her class and style for my whole life. Mr. Redd, Judge Redd, lives across the street from me, and I tease him often, because he had me cut his grass, which is on a hill, for five dollars each time, and I say he owes me money. But Mrs. Redd is an amazing, amazing testament to what hard work and black woman magic looks like, and we will miss her. And so I just wanted to put that in. God bless you, Mrs. Redd.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Seeing no other lights, at this point, I'd like to invite all councilors and guests to please rise. And we will adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Baker, Kathleen Katie McDonough, and John Jack Runkle. For Councilor Sabby George, Willie Lee Thomas Jr. For Council Jackson, Vanu Bose. For Council Lamatina, Josephine Louisa Kianka, Marie Habich Ramos, and Michael Habich. For Councilors McCarthy and O'Malley, Elizabeth A. Mulry. For Councilor Flaherty, Lorraine R. Gavin. For Councilors McCarthy and Flaherty, Robert G. Collagen, Patricia Sade. For Council Presley, Frances Redd. For Council Zachem, Shirley Slater. For the Chair, Frances McMurray. A moment Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at twelve noon in the Island Inn and Allo Chamber. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Council is adjourned.